Can we stand and say a pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We have no visitors signed in permission to speak and no written communication. Do we have any board committee reports? No? And we can jump right into the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. I'm pleased to welcome Mr. Crozier and Mrs. Marzaki from Smallwood to provide you with an update on Smallwood's strategic planning efforts this year. Excuse me.
Well, thank you, Mr. Penala, Board of Education. We are excited and appreciate the opportunity to share about some of the exciting highlights that are taking place at Smallwood. It is an honor and a privilege for Mrs. Marzaki and I to serve as the building administrators. I am thrilled to share that, for the fourth consecutive year, Smallwood Drive Elementary was honored with a Promising Practice Award from Character.org, a recognition that was only given to eight schools last year in New York State. Our Lending a Paw initiative focused on intrinsic motivation, encouraging students to show empathy and kindness because it's the right thing to do. Much of this was captured beautifully in our Rory Lenz-Apaw comic book, which I gave each of you a copy of. This book, which showcases acts of kindness, was written by students in pre-K through 5th grade. Throughout the year, our school came together, providing gift baskets for veterans, donating food to local pantries, celebrating a cancer survivor, and raising over $17,000 for the American Heart Association. As we celebrate this recognition, I share my appreciation to our entire school community, our students, parents, teachers, and staff for their unwavering commitment to this initiative and recognizing that paying it forward and providing acts of kindness not only feels good for the receiver, but it also makes a big impact for the giver. In the spring of 2015, the Amherst Central District School District initiated a partnership with the Warner School of Education from the University of Rochester to start our strategic planning process for our district in all four buildings. The district then embarked on an initial strategic planning journey from 2017 to 2022, outlining priorities and initiatives and ensuring that all of the stakeholders in our district were rowing in the same direction. However, as we all experienced, the unforeseen challenges posed by the global pandemic in March 2020 resulted in a pause in our strategic planning process. However, the Amherst Central School District relaunched its strategic plan for the periods from 2023 to 2026. We are pleased to share that tonight's board presentation will focus on highlighting initiatives from the 2023-24 Smallwood Strategic Plan. Within Smallwood, three key priorities echo our overarching district motto of tradition, pride, and achievement. Mrs. Marzaki and I will highlight initiatives this evening from student life, teaching and learning, and Amherst pride. Our Smallwood strategic planning journey for this academic school year picked off on July 25, 2023, with our Strategic Planning Retreat. Over 20 devoted stakeholders, which included administrators, teachers, teaching assistants, clerical staff, and parents actively engaged in a collaborative effort to support the numerous initiatives that are outlined in this year's plan. We extend our appreciation to the members of our team for their dedication, who played a pivotal role in launching several of our new initiatives. The result of our collective effort is a plan that directs our work in Smallwood each and every day. At the conclusion of our retreat on July 25, team members were invited to offer and share feedback on their thoughts on the day's proceedings. While I'd be delighted to share all the valuable input we received, I'll share two comments for you this evening that sum up our work for that uplifting day. We have not had a retreat in a number of years. I honestly felt that it was a very, very successful. I honestly felt that it was very, very successful and productive. I loved the collaboration with stakeholders. We were able to come up with wonderful ideas to bring back to our school community.
The first pillar we'll focus on tonight is student life. Our PAWS initiative began in 2015, and it was really built from the ground up from a variety of stakeholders. PAWS is our Positive Behavior Intervention Supports that we practice at Smallwood, and it's a framework for supporting students' social and emotional well-being. Like any initiative, over time, to ensure its sustainability, it needs to be adjusted. So this summer, our strategic plan was able to create action steps around the revamp of PAWS and are now calling it PAWS 2.0. Many of the action steps include ideas about building connections, having intrinsic motivation, restorative practices for discipline, PAWS in action, meaning like looking for those good things that kids are doing in the community involving PAWS, and then community building. The Behavior Committee has now taken on many of the action steps that were created from the strategic plan this summer and now work on them monthly to ensure their sustainability. One example of an outcome from the retreat was a parent response that so many great social strategies are being taught to their children at school, but they're not necessarily getting that information carried through at home. So now, in our PAWS press that we send out quarterly, which is on the right there, it's a little snapshot of it, we link these videos for the parents to watch that display social skills being taught at school and how those can be used at home. This is just one idea about how ideas from the retreat have been further developed by our Behavior Committee and have had a positive impact on our school community. So we'll take a minute to watch that video. It's a couple minutes.
Teach your children well their fathers have. Parents, as you know, our school-wide behavior system is PAWS. In this next video, Mrs. Noe is going to help Rory with PAWS at home.
We encourage you to watch this with your child and then come up with your own ideas as a family of what the P-A-W-S might look like in your home. And you can hang it on your fridge or someplace where everybody can see it. As we know, our kids, students know, right, Mr. Crozier, that PAWS is everywhere. So every student in our building, pre-K to 5, we know, knows what PAWS means. So watch the video together and see if you can come up with some ideas of how you can use PAWS at home.
We appreciate your partnership with your child's education, and we hope these videos help support you at home, and they certainly will help support us here at school. Thank you for watching.
Rory, do you have another really exciting thing to teach our families?
I know what it is.
What is it?
PAWS is everywhere.
PAWS is everywhere. And did you know that you can use PAWS at home?
I know that, Mrs. Noe, because it's not just at school, PAWS. Parents could use PAWS to help their kids in their house.
Absolutely. So let's see if we can come up with some things, Rory, that maybe, where you would use PAWS in your house. So the P is practice being a friend. How would you show PAWS at home with practice being a friend?
Well, that's, practice being a friend is being kind to everyone. So that would be, you know, being kind to your brother or your sister.
Yep.
Just remembering that we treat people the right way.
Absolutely. So making sure that you're treating everybody with kindness. So if you're playing with your neighbors, or you have friends over, cousins, or your siblings, you're practicing being a friend, absolutely, just like you do at school. What about the A, always be respectful?
Well, that, I think we would connect to mom and dad and the way that we interact, the way we talk, the way we treat our parents.
Sure.
We always need to be respectful and follow their directions.
Yeah, so being respectful is following directions. Maybe the first time, using kind words in a calm tone, right?
Right.
Following through with what we start, or even just taking care of things around your house and making sure that you're helping out around the house. Maybe you're gonna help empty the dishwasher, or you're gonna help pick up after yourself, right? Or clean your room and things. That's being respectful of the things in your house as well as being respectful to the people in your house, right?
That's right. That's the A.
So now we have the W, which is work to learn and grow. So how would you do that at home?
Well, W work is kind of easy, like maybe you're doing some chores or you're helping your family out by picking up some responsibilities. And by doing that, you are growing, Mrs. Noe.
Yeah, absolutely. And you're gonna do your homework that teachers ask you to do, right? Without giving mom and dad a hard time. So absolutely, work to learn and grow. Get the things done that you need to do, being responsible, right? Absolutely. And the last one is safety first. How would you show safety at home?
Oh, boy, there's lots of ways we show safety everywhere. But at home, you know, we just need to be very careful when we're outside.
Absolutely.
Okay, following rules.
Yep.
You know, being on time. If your parents say you need to come in at a certain time.
Absolutely.
There's lots of ways that we're safe. Not turning on certain appliances.
Yeah, for sure. Wearing a helmet when you're on your bike.
There you go, there you go.
Also, just making sure that you're keeping your hands and your feet to yourself and you're being safe with everybody in your house, right?
Right.
Absolutely. So, boys and girls, I know that you already know the PAWS rules, but now your caregivers know the PAWS rules too. So see if you can work as a family to come up with your own ideas of what the P-A-W-S looks like at your house and then hang it up somewhere so you can reflect on it and remember it when you need to.
Because PAWS is everywhere, not just at school. Now it's at home.
It would not be a Smallwood routine if we didn't have Rory in there. Of course, we had to get that in there. Okay. So here we have more examples of us working on making connections with our PAWS 2.0 initiative. Another example is we have our bus liaison here, Mr. Kurzad, Mr. Crozier, and myself. Early in the school year, we met with the bus drivers to form initial relationships, and we provided them with this pamphlet down here, which really goes over the rules, policies, and procedures of PAWS, how that might look on the bus as well. And we had them in for pizza. We handed them out PAWS shirts. And we also gave them individual stack of PAWS so that they could recognize riders on their bus for good behavior. We continue to use our cafeteria right here as a space to build community. Classes earn cafeteria tickets to be entered into a drawing, and tenth classes are celebrated bi-weekly for their positive behavior in the cafeteria. We decorate special lunch tables in the entire cafeteria. Gets excited about this initiative that happens bi-weekly, and it's fun how they cheer each other on. Another new addition to our cafeteria here is our PAWS box that you can see. And classrooms work towards a class goal to collect PAWS. And now they're delivering these PAWS to the cafeteria. They get to walk up those little stairs, and they drop them in the clear box, which is now filled with a lot of PAWS because it's a visual for the kids to see not only the PAWS that their classroom collected, but all the PAWS collected in the school. We also started the year with an assembly here. And you'll see various members of our community in the assembly. For example, that's Mrs. Samuel, who runs our cafeteria. And at the assembly, we discussed how everyone's an important piece to our community, and we all have roles and responsibilities to make our community united and fit together like a puzzle. And lastly, we've taken on a big initiative with all of our teachers and our teaching assistants and our aides, reading this book, Better Than Carrots or Sticks. All sixteen members of our Behavior Committee read this book and decided it would be a good starting point for us to learn about restorative practices. Restorative practices are techniques that strengthen relationships and connections among groups and help with discipline. So this book really will give everyone a common language and understanding around restorative practices, and it'll help guide our work on PAWS 2.0 in the years to come.
We'd be ruthless if we didn't mention Dr. Shanahan in the curriculum office, who's always so great with resources and supported our efforts with our book study. Purchased 120 books, thanks to your great support. So thank you, Dr. Shanahan. Well, following our successful lending a paw initiative that won our big award, our school-wide theme this year is "Our Community, Our Plan." And the theme this year is also inspired by a children's book, Mrs. Marzaki. We'll hold it up, and maybe we can pass it around, Mrs. Marzaki. What to Do With An Idea by Kobe Yamada. And it centers around a young boy who initially hesitates to share his idea, but then he does find the courage to do so. And the experience, the outcomes are wonderful. So at the beginning of this school year, we purchased a book, this children's book, children's book for every homeroom. And we encouraged our Smallwood students to share their ideas on how they think that they could enhance Smallwood. Numerous hundreds of ideas have since materialized, including our vibrant opening day celebration, our bracelet sale that supported breast cancer awareness, SDS activity nights that are going to be organized by our dedicated Smallwood parents, and a very spirited Jonah Heim Baseball and Softball Jersey Day. All stakeholders within our community, students, faculty, staff, and parents, have actively contributed ideas to our committees. And we are thrilled to report to the board tonight that this initiative has made a significant impact at our beloved Smallwood. From the hundreds of ideas that have been shared, more than 25 have been carefully selected to move forward and come to life. Our students are beaming with excitement. They are stopping me in the hall daily. "Mr. Crozier, I have an idea." And we are really excited. We are looking forward to welcoming a school pet, a dog from the SPCA that will visit our classrooms. Additionally, we are eager to extend invitations to military personnel to march in our Flag Day Parade. Again, all ideas that have been proposed by our students themselves. Our faculty and staff have come up with ideas, and they're enthusiastic about our upcoming implementation of a soup, salad, and sandwich bar that will be in our faculty room. Simultaneously, parents have expressed their interest in hosting activity nights and providing popsicles on the playground for our new students who are enrolled in grades 1 through 5 late in August. The enthusiasm and empowerment felt by all stakeholders in improving our school community has truly exceeded all of our expectations.
So now we'll talk about pillar number two, teaching and learning. A big change this year has been the switch to computer-based testing for our 5th grade students for ELA in math and also the new upcoming science test. So we have been thoughtfully planning for this transition since I came on board this summer. And the communication between the curriculum office, administrators, and teachers has really been outstanding. We want students to perform at their best ability on this test with content knowledge and not have barriers because of typing or difficulty with navigating a math toolbar. So it's important that we teach the kids the skills behind how to successfully take these tests on the computer. So this year, grades 3, 4, and 5 all have various levels of expectations for preparing students for computer-based testing. 5th graders have the most preparation, completing the test this year, while next year, grades 4 and 5 will both have computer-based testing. So this year, the 5th graders are going to be taking testing simulations, which are planned in January. And these simulations will take place on the computer and have real testing-like conditions, which will allow teachers and students the opportunity to have New York State release questions, while also seeing what that digital platform looks like online and navigating that toolbar, doing things like having a login and an access code. And that will help us to better prepare for the tests that are coming up in April and May. A big part of our strategic plan has also been a renewed focus on data-driven instruction connected to our state assessment results. Well, we've always looked at multiple sets of data pieces, including Fastbridge and ELPs and Mike Sabres data. Due to the pandemic, it's been a couple years since we've taken a look at the New York State Assessment Results. So to start and bring that back, we presented a building-wide overview in November, and we related it to having a 30,000-foot view that'll be able to tell us how we're doing as a building from a larger perspective. Then, grade levels met in December to analyze ELA data. And they'll meet again in January to analyze math data. And this is a closer view from the mountain, really honing in on the specifics. So we've spread this work out, so it's not a one-and-done, but continues to be at the forefront throughout the school year. Also, a new protocol was created for teachers to analyze data in a systematic way. And this process was modeled at the grade levels by Mr. Crozier and myself. And then we worked collaboratively to analyze, they worked collaboratively as grade levels, to analyze and record their thoughts. The data sets teachers reviewed included analysis on how they were doing as a grade level together with each standard and also analyzing their individual testing results to know which standards their students performed well on and what are some areas of growth. And with this analysis, teachers are really able to have real, honest communication and conversations and learn from each other to support instruction, curriculum, and assessment needs. There's a direct correlation between student attendance and learning. So the bottom line is our teachers can prepare the most engaging lessons for our students, but if they aren't at school or they're late to school, then they don't have the same learning opportunities as others. So an action step under the pillar of teaching and learning has been improving our policies and procedures around absenteeism and tardiness. The poster you see on the right here that says "Attendance Matters" was added to our quarterly PAWS press and was also mailed home to students with high tardies or absences. In elementary, there's a focus on educating the parents about the importance of getting the kids to school. But we know that every family situation is unique, so we lead with our PPS staff, which involves our psychologist, our social worker, and then the two of us to discuss students flagged who are late or tardies. And then we work with the family to support why those are occurring and how we can come up with some problem-solving solutions. Our goal is to entertain the four students are chronically absent and to cut back on the tardies because those can lead to more absences.
The third pillar of our district priorities is Amherst pride. The traits of a Tiger initiative was conceived with a proactive approach to addressing an anticipated turnover in the Smallwood staff over the next decade. With an estimated close to 30% of our teaching staff becoming eligible for retirement before the year 2035, it became imperative to identify and uphold the core values that we hold as a faculty and staff at Smallwood. The traits of a Tiger subcommittee diligently identified the following traits to be emphasized during the hiring process. These traits will be discussed with members of the hiring committee prior to the interview process when filling critical positions that are needed due to retirements. Here are the core values of the faculty and staff at Smallwood Elementary: compassionate mentors, lifelong learners, dedicated and driven professionals, collaborative team players, resilient and adaptable, welcoming and inclusive, confident and engaging, and committed to tradition and values. We look to have this initiative shape our hiring philosophies as we prepare Smallwood for continued success in the future. Discussing tradition. It is tradition that each Thanksgiving, the Smallwood administration hosts a staffing appreciation breakfast for the 125 employees that work at our school. Mrs. Marzaki and I put together a video for our staff sharing the students' appreciation for all the hard work that they do in our building. We felt it most appropriate to also share this short video with all of you this evening. Enjoy.
I see trees of green. I see them bloom. Only you. And I think to myself what a wonderful world.
My name is Juliana, and I just want to say I'm thankful for everyone in this school because they work so hard to build this building. Rory, Richard, everybody. I just love it so much. If you love it too, then you have a big heart.
Hi, I'm Juni, and I'm in Ms. Egloff's class. And one thing I'm thankful for is all the kind teachers.
My name is Kyra. This is Conspire's class. And my teacher's superpower is taking care of everybody.
I see skies of blue. Clouds of white. Bright blessed days. Dark sacred nights. And I think to myself.
Hi, my name is KJ, and I'm in Ms. Wheeler's class. And I'm thankful for all the food that the lunch people make.
I am thankful for the teacher assistants.
I am thankful for the clerical.
I am thankful for the school nurse.
I'm thankful for my class.
And I'm thankful for Christmas.
All the wonderful faces. People going by. I see friends shaking hands. Saying how do you do. Very soon.
Hi, my name is Lauren Wood. I'm from Ms. Randy's class, and I'm thankful for the A.I.S. teachers.
I'm from Mr. Irwin's class. I'm thankful for my OT and PT.
I'm thankful for Mr. Clay.
I am thankful for the custodians.
I'm thankful for the cafeteria monitors.
My teacher is Ms. Wensbury, and my name is George.
My teacher is, my teacher's superpower is Vine. I'm math.
I watched them grow. And I'm a fool. I never know. And I think to myself what a wonderful.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Who's your teacher?
It's Carmen.
And what do you want to tell the teachers?
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving!
Well, I guess I need to do a disclaimer. Richard is Rory's cousin. He's also our Tiger mascot. Some of my teachers thought it would be funny to name Rory's cousin Richard. The kids love Richard, and they love Rory. So on behalf of the 680 students and the 125 adults that call Smallwood Elementary their second home, we thank the Board of Education and Superintendent Penala and the district administration for all that you do in supporting and providing us with the resources necessary to give the Smallwood community the most memorable elementary experience possible. Thank you. Thank you. We would take any questions.
I know it takes a lot of time to put the plan together, implement the plan, and then put together a presentation about the plan is another step that you'd have to go forward with for us tonight, and I appreciate that. I think you've done a nice job capturing the work that's going on in the building. It's very exciting stuff, and under your leadership, so thank you and great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a video presentation from Mr. Pigeon I know you all look forward to from our high school students and teachers of the month for, from the Pathfinder Task Force. While Deb is queuing that up, I'll just remind you, I do talk to Mr. Pigeon about doing this in person, which I know is a goal for all of us, but he did mention that because certain times of year, especially this one, with the operetta around the horizon and winter sports, a lot of our teachers and students who are being honored aren't available. So we did go with the video, but it's an ongoing dialogue between he and I.
Thank you, as always.
I'm gonna move on again.
Sorry.
Okay. It was like the Oscars, you were playing me off.
Thank you, as always, for the wonderful opportunity to... about her work in school at Reserve. Thank you, as always, for the wonderful opportunity to shine a spotlight and share our Students of the Month and Teacher of the Month here at Amherst Central High School. Really excited to do so, have some wonderful students and staff to share with you today. Thank you to Superintendent Pennella and our Board of Education. And without further ado, I'll bring us to November. November Students of the Month was Emma Liebha and Yaroslav Petrowski, and our Teacher of the Month was Ms. Shelkov. Let's start with Emma. Emma was nominated by a number of her teachers, and they had nothing but high praise for Emma. She's really quietly outgoing in many ways, a very positive presence in class, very, very encouraging to her peers. She's a member of our track team and really puts everything into what she does, and she achieves at a very, very high level. So congratulations to you, Emma. Interesting thing about Emma is that she's very modest about how she goes about her work at school at Reserve, but very friendly, always acknowledging you and the teachers. We're quick to share many wonderful things about Emma, so congratulations, Emma. Moving on to Yaroslav. Yaro, as we like to call him, his teachers reported him to do very well in class. He came to us from Ukraine quite recently, is a newcomer to our country, and him in the Amherst region has really achieved at a high level. Very serious student, but very positive in class, goes out of his way to command the English language, and very strong in writing, very, very strong in math and sciences. So really, point achievement for Yaroslav to come a long way in a short period of time. Very proud to have him as November Student of the Month. Ms. Shelkov was nominated, a veteran teacher that we know very well at Amherst. Ms. Shelkov has the distinct duty of presiding over our Pathfinders. So she's a big part of our leadership program here at Amherst, and also a leader within our Social Studies Department, very, very active in many of their endeavors in addition to an active member of our ICT co-teaching efforts in the district. So congratulations to you, Ms. Shelkov, certainly well-deserved. Moving on to December, we have Rowan Kinsley, William McIntyre, and Ms. O'Neill White. Let's start with Rowan Kinsley. Was recognized by many of her teachers, very positive senior, very nice young lady. Ms. Boyer pointed her out to us that she was very, very instrumental in our holiday food drive at school council, and sponsors annually, and was really the go-to member of that team promoting the effort and collecting all the food. Beyond that, many of her teachers have mentioned that she's just a positive, bright spot in class, always friendly, always happy, and contributes quite a bit. So congratulations to Rowan. Billy McIntyre, a really strong student, came to our attention. Billy just recently won his DECA contest and will be moving on from the regional competition to state competition. Has a rigorous schedule. Billy is very strong for calculus, AP Students, AP Stats, AP Psychology, has really challenged himself with quite a schedule this year. Billy's a super positive, friendly kid, and well-deserving of this honor. Congratulations, Billy. Ms. O'Neill White, who may or may not be as familiar with new teacher to us, just clocking in at one year. She had taken over for Mr. Crock when he retired around this time last year. She is currently the president of the Western New York English Teachers Association that works at Buff State with Dr. Chacon. So she's really in a bright spot at Amherst, bringing fresh perspectives to the department and a lot of professional development to the department, which is excellent. She worked very closely with the team at Buffalo State College. Dr. Chacon and Ms. O'Neill White's leadership was very instrumental in keeping a very strong foundation, collaboration, going with the English folks over in Western New York in general, but specifically at Buff State and their organization. Very, very popular with the students, really has wonderful skills in terms of developing insights, critical thinking, writing skills within students, and certainly picks a number of literary and novels for students to really challenge their thinking and think deeply and reflect upon the world around them. So congratulations to Ms. O'Neill White on this well-deserved honor. So that would be our November/December Students of the Month at Amherst Central High School. As always, once again, we welcome this opportunity, we appreciate this opportunity, and enjoy the rest of your meeting. Thank you.
Should we could just start with the reception and such, and so at least, I mean, there are a lot of kids anyway, but...
Yeah.
I mean, just so that they can experience the board appreciation, you know? I mean...
I think they've been talking about it. I mean, according to my son, they've been talking about coming back into our boardroom.
Yeah, I know, but they haven't done it. And so all these people that we're looking at now have not met us, right? So I'm just saying, if we just did a reception at least, then, you know, those are them an opportunity to understand that we actually are seeing care for them.
Past and current.
Yeah, I mean, like...
Don't be nothing.
Well, certainly have a conversation with Mr. Pigeon about, at least starting with step one, of maybe coming back in person and start with inviting folks and see how the participation goes, and then we'll monitor from there. Was that red folder over here?
Yes.
Can I have it, please?
Of course.
I just didn't want to end and then have it walk out, but thank you. That's all we have for the superintendent's report, thank you.
Okay. We will need a motion for new business items.
Make a motion for new business items E1, A through E2, B through B and C, or in three, C and D. One second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving new business items E1, A through E2, B through E, and three, C and D, please say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries six zero. Ms. Pasoli, do we have any follow-up action items?
Just to revisit the idea of bringing the task force in person.
Okay, great. With that, we'll need a motion to convene to executive session.
We'll make a motion to convene to executive session to discuss matters regarding appointment of a particular person and pending litigation.
One second. All those in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries six zero. Thank you, everybody, for coming.